My name is Kevin Cooper, I'm the Chief of Staff in the system. And as you can tell, we're doing this totally different this time. So this will be the one town hall meeting that we have. We realize that the way we've been communicating in the past, you know, work maybe 10 or 20 years ago, and us just going around to the different areas and doing in-person conversations where we maybe had, you know, six or 10 people show up wasn't really as effective as it could be, which is why you've seen us go up now with a Facebook page that we're getting going. We're going to continue the leadership listens. We're also going to be doing these town hall meetings hopefully more frequently and in a different format. So what we are doing is we're actually up here right now at North Naples in the boardroom live. We have an audience here, again, for the folks that just came in, if you can please make sure your phones are turned off, try and keep the rock going down, coughing down the best you can, and the conversations down because the mics are all very, very sensitive. We're going to go and we're also broadcasting right now out on WebEx, so we're hitting about 120, 130 different locations on WebEx. We are also going and simulcasting down to the auditorium at the downtown campus and to the conference room at the central campus. So we'll see how this works, there's going to be some bumps in the road, I see one right now with a little bit of conversation happening on the speaker over here that they're working on, so just bear with us as we go through this. We're also changed up the format on how we're doing it. And what we're doing now is we're going to have a few reverse things here in the beginning of, sorry, I'll for Dr. Weiss kind of giving a brief update on the system and where things are at, and then with a couple other folks going and running through a couple slides, and then we're going to try and get interactive and have some question and answers and dialogue and just kind of truly address what's on your mind now. So Dr. Weiss, you want to start us off with a brief update?
Thanks Kevin, and good morning everyone. So three nice things to start with and two areas of concern. Everyone knows we're five-star, it's a big deal, we'll be coming out, CMS serves the Medicare and Medicaid services, we'll be coming out with another rating in a couple months from now, it's looking good going forward and that's great. Consistent with that, when you do well with quality, what also happens is you do well with finances. So we have two bond rating agencies, one is with Fitch where we had an A+ and they just upgraded us to a double A-, A and A-, now the A+ sounds better than the A-, but it really is the next grade up. Last night Kyle Blackburn is here, up here with us and works with the NCH position group, made the astute observation that with all these bond ratings, for every one that goes up across the nation, right now this past year 3.4 went down, so every person, every institution like us is getting better, the whole industry is getting downgraded. So we are swimming against the stream basically with a better bond rating, which goes along with a better quality, better quality at five-star puts us in the top 7% in the nation. So those are really good things. Another good thing is we had a great Blue Zones meeting here in town last Monday night at Florida Gulf Coast University and their Elite Arena where they play basketball. We had about 2,000 folks from around southwest Florida hearing Dan Buettner. We as, as everyone knows, we are the first hospital in the nation to be Blue Zone certified, cafeterias are at the restaurant level and everything else, and we overall in our healthcare and our actual health over the past couple years have had made tremendous progress with the dropping body mass index, better than the A1C, a measure for diabetes, blood pressures are down and so on, and all the other incidences of disease. So we really are a model for the rest of the nation, and this community is a model for the rest of the nation. We're trying to share that literally at the American Hospital Association and elsewhere so that people can emulate what we're doing. Couple areas of, not, one of, one is reality, Leapfrog which rates every six months. For a while we were As on both campuses, then we were an A and a B downtown. We're going to continue as an A at North Naples, but we're going to drop to a C transiently downtown. We had one quarter with cholera-associated urinary tract infections that we got on right away, noted that, changed the number of fully catheters we're using and how we're monitoring things. So that will come back up, but it's for six months we're going to have an A and a C. So things do change, and these are serious tests, that five-star and the bond rating, you know, we're real competition, but we're on it and that will be correct. Which gets me to my last point, Joint Commission is coming sometime between now and early this summer, some Monday morning we'll have between eight and 10 Joint Commission examiners go through the inpatient area and the outpatient area, they'll go to the ORs, they'll go to the ICUs, they'll go to the floors. They're not going to spend time, or spend very little time, in conference rooms, they're going to be out and about and seeing what we do. They're huge on hand washing, Dora Faust and Georgine Kukumbak are on it, we've got a lot of teams going around self-assessing, looking for high dust and everything else, it's serious. We have the only outpatient facilities in southwest Florida that are Joint Commission certified. We've done well in Joint Commissions in the past, we've done not-so-well. The "not-so-well" is not much fun because they keep coming back and coming back and coming back. The easiest and the best time to do well with Joint Commission is the first time, which is why we're going to be so vigilant now going forward, being ready and prepared for the folks when they come and understanding what's going on. Thanks for what you do, we've got a great story, much better than most hospitals across the nation, believe me, but we want to continue that good story also, so I'm going to ask our next speaker to go forward.
Thank you, Dr. Weiss. One other thing I forgot to mention, that is we are videotaping this as well, so we're going to go and put the link for the video from the town hall up on both the Facebook page and on the internet as well, so if you have friends who couldn't make it here today, you'll be able to go and direct them to that. We're going to go and ask Renee to come up and talk a little bit about benefit changes that are going to be happening. And one of the things that we've seen come in on leadership listens, because if you've been reading or looking at those, you see that we've been referencing there's going to be some benefit changes that are going to happen mid-year here, and folks are saying, "Why are we doing benefit changes, this is something we look forward to now every year going forward of twice a year benefit changes." No, you shouldn't look forward to that. What happened this year is that we're remembers at the end of last year we had Hurricane Irma, okay, and so September was just a horrible month, we didn't know what to expect for this next year, so we held back a little bit on some of the changes we wanted to do to the benefits that we had been planning on doing. Well, we've been into the year now, everyone's gone and seen what the volumes have looked like and how well we're doing, and so we said, "All right, let's go ahead and roll out the rest of these benefit changes." And then we've also gone and been hearing and seeing on some of the different forums and literature forums, questions coming up about tattoos and dress policies and stuff like that, so we're going to ask Renee to come up and share a little bit of good news about some changes that are going to be happening on all those. Ready?
Good morning, how is everyone? So I'm Renee Dickin, I'm the Chief HR Officer, and we have some folks in the back, if you want to come up, we've got plenty seats here, so come on up and make yourself comfortable. So who's ready to hear about, what's wrong? Okay, who's ready to hear about PTO? Got a little noise, lots of noise, so that's good. So we have had lots of questions on PTO, and we've been talking about PTO for a long time, we talked about PTO at the last set of town halls last early fall, so we have made some changes to the PTO, so I'm going to walk through some of those now. So our current structure, just to remind everyone, is we have two different grids, so I'm going to pull those up, I'm not sure where that one's, oh, there we go. We have two different grids today, so we have those who are in the bucket of hired prior to 709, and then those who are in the bucket hired post-709. So it's very confusing for employees based on their date of hire, where their accruals at, it's, people are asking, "Why can't we have the higher accrual, etc.?" So we know it's confusing, these numbers here for our exempt salaried employees do exclude holidays, so you'll not see that number in this. So we are going to a new PTO structure. So effective April 29th, thank you Laurie, we will have one grid. And what it is, it's really going back to the post or prior to 709 bank, so we'll all be on that richer bank of accruals. For those that are in that previous bank, while it doesn't look like there's any changes to the days here, there will be an additional opportunity for you to earn additional PTO, so I'll get to that in a moment. The other thing that we changed on this was, you know, we have a traditional zero-to-five accrual bucket, five-to-10, etc., we've changed that. So now we'll have a zero-to-three, three-to-10, and then it's going to max out at 15 years. So those employees that are coming on now, or who may be here, so if you're at that third year going into the fourth year, you're actually going to realize a higher benefit or higher PTO accrual. So the additional days are as such. So those that are in the zero-to-three, they'll be increasing for hourly employees three PTO days. Those who are salaried and were brought on after 709 actually have an increase of eight days, because if you go back and look at the old accruals for our salary, we have current at 13, post at 21, there was a huge gap there. So we've trued that up, right-sized it, so those accruals will begin with that pay period 4/29 so that you'll be working through those. So that's very good. If you're in the three-to-10, so I'm still in that zero-to-five category, but I'm really at the third year past, you're actually going to realize from an hourly basis for those post-709, eight days and then two days if you're already in the five-to-10. We'll send this grid out with some instructions because I know it can get a little confusing and we're not spending a lot of time, but really the gist of it is that we've significantly increased particularly those that were in the second grid, new hires for the past nine years, now will be even with those from previous. Give a little delay here. So we talked about that, we went from two grids to one, moved our traditional zero-to-five versus the zero-to-three. So this is where I'll talk about how it will affect those who have been here prior to 709. Today, we have an accrual cap of 40 hours, so you can only accrue PTO up to 40 hours, okay, that's the max. If you work 48 hours, 56 hours, you still accrue at the 40-hour cap. We're removing that cap and there'll be no cap. So as you're picking up additional shifts, and yes, this does pertain more to the hourly, but there are opportunities for salaried staff to pick up additional shifts based on need, but for hourly staff members who pick up additional shifts in all categories, you will accrue up to that amount that you make. So, we've heard from you, you know, "I'd like to have more PTO so that if I'm COH-ed in the summer, I can offset that." By picking up those additional hours during a high census, you will then have additional PTO that you can leverage and use. So it's really based on your work patterns and what you pick up, how much you can earn. Remember that anything over 60 hours still has to have approval because we want to keep everyone safe and our patients safe, but we all know the hours that we work, so you'll be recognized for those hours now, and again, that'll start on the 29th. I'm going backwards, are you doing that?
Yeah.
Can you go to the next one?
I have a problem with the audio with downtown.
Oh, they're back?
Yeah.
So, we also heard from you, and this is probably more related to the exempt employees, that for departments that we require to close the day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, we're now going to make that discretionary based on departmental needs. So it'll be up to you and your department whether you need to be off or not, and if you are off, then you can, you can use discretion on using your PTO. What we heard from our exempt staff was, "You give me PTO, but then you require me to take it on these days, so I really lose that discretion." So that's gone. So that will no longer be in place, policy will be updated to reflect that so that you have more control over your time that you've earned, okay? So that's changes. So now I'm going to talk about four other things that we're just looking at, these are not into place, we've got a lot of work, a lot of evaluation to do before we finalize or approve it, but just to give you an idea of the things that we are doing behind the scenes and to let you know, should you have ideas or suggestions that might be similar to this, shoot them to us, blue-sky thinking, you never know. We really want to be that employer of choice, we want to be reasonable, we want to ensure that we can sustain changes, but we are always looking at different things. So, first one is perfect attendance bonus. We've heard that from staff to say, you know, "Is there some sort of recognition that we could have for staff that come to work faithfully?" Now, there's pros and cons to that. We don't want people coming to work sick, but we also don't want any, you know, unneeded sick call-offs or any abuse of that time. So we're looking at things to say perhaps, as example, if I have the flu and I bring in a physician's note stating that I have the flu and need to be out, then we may code that as a pandemic or something so that that's not counted against you, just like work comp and FMLA. So still working through a lot of kinks, but something that we're entertaining. Second is our tuition program, and I'm going to talk about tuition in a little bit, but the potential of offering either a scholarship or tuition to our children who are going into healthcare positions, commitment might look something like, as an employee, then my work commitment is to stay employed during the schooling of that child, and then the child would have a work commitment once they started working with NCH. So we think that would be something that would be unique and help fill our pipeline of potential candidates as we move into the future. Another is a community referral bonus. So today we have a employee book or referral bonus on our critical needs positions, and that's good, but think how far-reaching it could be if we were to offer our community members a community referral bonus. Their family, their children, their children's friends, I mean, it really could be far-reaching when you look at the cost of advertising and different things that we do, why not engage our community? We're a community system, so something that we're entertaining there. Then this next one, we would like just by show of hands, and if our colleagues at the other sites could take account, what would you think if we went to weekly pay versus bi-weekly pay? Show of hands, anybody would like that, or not so much, or?
I would.
We've got quite a few going back there. So what that would mean is that you would receive your paycheck on a weekly basis versus a bi-weekly basis. So again, not something that we've decided on, it would be an additional cost to the organization, but something we're just studying. So that just gives you a flavor of some of those things that we're looking at down the So now, EIB. We talked about some fantastic changes with PTO, we are going to change the EIB as well. And effective that same pay period, 4/29, the EIB accruals will end, we will no longer have EIB. Now, any time that you have in your bank, same as old sick time, that will remain in your bank, you will not lose that. For new employees coming on, starting the 29th, they will not have an accrual, that'll all be into their PTO. So you'll still have that bucket of time to use out there as long as you're here and employed with NCH. But remember, I told you we removed that PTO cap, you only earn 1.85 hours, up to a max of 240 hours of EIB. So if you're picking up additional time, you're earning extra PTO and far earning more than your EIB, so it's all how you look at it, all how you use it. Same requirements will stand to utilize the EIB, but we think it'll be a better program for you to earn more time to use at your discretion versus having to use a week of PTO then out on FMLA, etc. We're not wiping your banks away, we're not freezing it because it's not coming back, but your banks will be intact for you to use for whatever time you have there for however long you're here with the appropriate documentation, okay? So, policy updates. So we have several policies that will be changing, but there's two in particular that we want to talk about. So one is tuition. So we, today our tuition policy is that you have to be here and work a year before you're eligible for PTO, or for, PTO to bring, for tuition, and you can use up to the state max, which I believe is $5,200, and historically that's been for your courses. We've changed this, so now you will be eligible for tuition after your 90-day introductory period, so this helps those really who have just onboarded or those who are still in their first year of employment, so you are now eligible for tuition if you meet these guidelines. Additionally, you can use those funds now for labs, your textbooks and things like that where you couldn't previously. So that's opened up, so you again have more discretion on how you use that money that NCH provides you on an annual basis. So we encourage everyone to really participate in our education program and utilize those benefits. Now the next one, I'm ready for the drums to roll, is our tattoo policy. We are relaxing the policy, we're going to allow you to show your tattoos providing that they do not convey violence, discrimination, profanity, or sexually explicit content. And if that were the case, then you would be required to cover them. Otherwise, we've relaxed, we've joined the real world, and I think guys, you can probably show your tattoos now.
I've got a early start. I was going to put it on my chest, but you weren't embarrassing me.
We have heard you, we've heard so many leadership comments come through, and we agree that if we're all professional, that we can continue and allow this. The same with a small nose piercing, we will allow that too. We're no longer going to be walking around looking at your nose and up your nostril, so keep it tactful and remember that we're here to care for our patients, and we will let you know if we do feel that it's offensive. And I think that's my news.
Can you go back and do a one-minute version on the one grid? We lost Baker downtown.
Okay, can you take me back?
Take me back downtown.
On which grid, the consolidated one, the new grid? That one? Okay, so we lost Baker downtown for a minute, so I'm just going to run through this grid again, so thank you for bearing with me. So we've changed to the new PTO structure, which is a consolidation of our old going to the higher PTO accruals. Remember for those salaried exempt employees looking at this, this does exclude holidays, that's not added in. We've changed our traditional zero-to-five accrual to a zero-to-three accrual, so those who are here, zero-to-three years, are earning that 22 days. Those who are now three, who would have been waiting for two additional years, now get to jump to that three-to-10 year accrual, so they're going to realize that a great jump, and then it follows all along. When we send this out, we'll also do a written communication to follow through with this a little bit more so that you have better understanding. But it's really one grid, we can all go to one page and know based on our tenure where we fall and not, "What are you at, what am I at, when did you start, when did you start?" It's going to be very clean and very good going forward. And then again, I think you heard the other part, that we removed the cap so you have the discretion to earn as much as you want to earn.
Is there a maximum amount of 400 hours of PTO or anything like that?
The question was, is there a maximum amount of hours? No, there's no max, but remember the carryover still remains the same, so it's still 160 hours still.
A year.
Yeah, we do think this will help offset if we have to do any COH-ing or anything during the summer, so that you'll have that time to use, so, okay?
Another question, is excessive PTO still able to be sold back?
We still will do a PTO cash out with the requirements that we have in place today, and more to come on that, so it's, that remains the same. So I think we'll try and get through John's session and then open it up to a lot of questions that I'm sure you may all have, okay? Thank you, John?
Good morning, I'm John Griffith, Director of Security for NCH. For those of you that I don't know, we're going to be making some pretty significant security changes. I know, are you ready for that? Why they do comedy at night, we're ready for that. So effective Monday morning, we will be locking down all of the hospitals, both of the hospitals. We will be screening all of our visitors coming into the hospital, much same way we do in the birthplace, so if you've been in the birthplace, you see the badges, the stick-on badges they wear. So every visitor will be screened as they come in the door, we'll be requiring photo identification from each of the visitors coming in, and we will be issuing them an ID. So anyone you see in the building, anywhere in the hospital, should have a photo ID badge, whether it's the stick-on, whether it's the badges we wear, contractors, vendors, everyone should have an ID. That includes folks who may come in to eat in our cafeterias, they're going to have to come through the screening station initially before they go anywhere in the hospital. At the downtown hospital, we're going to be set up in three locations, we'll be screening at the front lobby entrance, we'll be at the desk there with Peter the Greeter.
Your slide.
And what I didn't say, all the visitors, all the ID badges they wear will be expiring badges, self-expiring badges, so after 24 hours that badge will bleed out with a red expired on it, so you'll know that whoever's here needs to get a new badge, they have to have a new badge every day. So we'll be able to account for everyone who's in the hospital. As I said, all doors are going to be locked, employees will have card access to every door coming into the hospital, there are all access controls, so every employee will have access to all the outside doors. The only exception may be a loading dock in areas for safety, you may not have access to those, but you should be able to get in any of the doors. So if you forget your ID badge, you're going to have to come in through the emergency room and security and have them issue you a temporary badge. The check-in locations at the downtown hospital are going to be in the main lobby, we'll have a security station set up there at the desk where Peter the Greeter sits now, we'll also, and that will be from the time we open the lobby doors at 5:00 in the morning until 9:00 PM when the lobby closes. After that time, all visitors coming in are directed through the emergency room now, and they will be screened at that location as well. We'll be screening in the emergency room 24/7, so we'll have security screening there all the time. And the third location, coming to the downtown, is coming off the Skybridge, I know we have folks who are going to be coming from the Med Plaza into the hospital, so we'll have a screening station set up on the second floor just outside Communications and that little cubbyhole area, years ago there were vending machines in there, but that's where we'll be set up. And they'll be set up there again from 5:00 AM until 9:00 PM when we lock down the Med At the North Naples Hospital, we will have the lobby entrance here in the town, Baker Tower, security will be set up there next to the volunteer desk, and in the emergency room where we currently are located now, the walk-in entrance to the emergency room, and Brookdale as well, since we have a lot of folks coming in, Brookdale will visit. So they'll be set up there from 5:00 AM until 9:00 PM. We're using the same system that we're using in the birthplace, so you'll see the same kind of ID badges at all locations. Along with this now are some responsibilities for employees. If we're going to be successful, we're going to need each of you to help us with this. I know you've all seen what we call table beating or piggybacking, where somebody comes in the door and somebody else follows them in, so you're going to have to really be cognizant not to let that happen. When you come out a door, you're going to have to make sure that nobody follows you in that door, you're going to have to direct them to one of the security entrances if somebody tries to come in through those locations. There will be signage on the doors that says they're employee entrances only. Do not allow anyone in the doors that don't have a badge. I was looking at cameras this morning, which I do frequently, and I saw employees coming in some of the back doors and they were in some of the back doors, and they were bringing folks in with them, probably to go to their department, but they did not have ID badges, that can't happen. So if you're bringing people, whether it's IT, or EBS, or engineering, or security, they're going to have to come through the security and be issued an ID badge. Persons that you observe in the hospital, and for a while, I'm sure that's gonna happen, you're gonna see people that get into the hospital that don't have ID badges. We don't want to direct them to a security check-in, we want to personally escort them. If you try to point them back to a security location, they're gonna wander off again, and we're gonna be in the same situation. So if you can, escort them back. If not, if you can't do that, then call security, and we'll come and get them, and we'll escort them back as well. Couple of other things we're gonna be doing. We currently have a security officer at the freestanding northeast location. We're working out the logistics now, and we will very soon be placing a security officer at the central campus as well, so there'll be one in the lobby at the time the doors open until they close. Also, with the New Bonita location, probably in December, we'll be staffing that with a security officer twenty-four-seven, as we do at the northeast location. Coming very soon, I think these are all positive changes. I know you've probably seen a significant increase in the number of security officers. That's gonna increase. We still don't have all the positions filled yet, so you should see a much greater security presence.
All right, I think we just hit you with a whole bunch of stuff on the benefits and on security. One thing, on the benefits stuff, a lot of these ideas, these changes we're coming up with aren't things that we come up with on our own, they're things that people will go in through leadership listens and other forums, give us the ideas. It might take us a little bit longer than you would hope to kind of work through the ideas and kind of put something in place, but please do keep those ideas going. That short list that Renee showed you of some things that we are looking at, we're serious about that stuff. We're looking at that stuff, and we need you to go and get more ideas, so we can go and get on the list as well. So what we want to do now is, that was the rehearsed part of this program, so now we're gonna go to the unrehearsed part, where we just do some questions and answers with folks. We're gonna open it up for any questions here in the live audience at North Naples first, focusing on the stuff that Renee presented, or John presented, and then we'll open it up to the broader questions after we go through. So any questions up here for Renee on any of the benefit changes, or the PTO stuff? Nothing?
I did such a good job.
It was a second read through. All right, how about a question in the back?
As far as converting to a weekly paycheck, is there any benefit to us to do that, aside from the salary pay? Is there any tax benefit to that or not?
No, yeah, the question is, what's the rationale, or what's the thought process? Is there any benefit to the employees on going to a weekly paycheck? We are going and hearing from some of the other employers in the area that they are looking at going to weekly pays, and with some employees who are in a situation where they are living much more paycheck to paycheck, it goes and helps ease that burden for them, the time, the distance, if you will, between the paychecks. There is a cost associated with it, and I'm sure that Rick is trying to keep the payroll team at the central campus calm right now, on the whole concept. But, you know, there is a lot of extra work that our staff up for. That's why we're trying to get an initial idea as to whether folks would go and find it a benefit or not. In terms of tax benefits and stuff, no, there isn't anything. What we'll probably do, and you're gonna see us doing more of this, is sending out a survey to everyone, saying, what do you think about this? You know, is this something you would like or not like? So as we send those around, we're not tracking back the answers literally soon, we just wanna know what you're thinking. Good question. Other questions on any of the benefits stuff from up here? Yes, sir?
Well, just regarding, regarding what you just said, if there's gonna be like a cost to the organization for going every week for a paycheck, is that gonna end up affecting us with our pay?
Yeah, the question is, if there's a cost associated with going to a weekly paycheck, is that something that we turn around and we would just go and charge back to the employers or affect the employees? No, it would be two separate issues. And you had a question on the benefits, or anything on security? Yes, ma'am?
I know this is there, we have students that are with us for eight to twelve weeks, do they have to come through the security check-in every day?
John, come on up here.
Or do they have temporary badges?
Now, we...
Repeat the question.
Okay. Can you repeat the question? I wasn't sure I heard. Somebody by students come in.
We have students that are with us, maybe eight to twelve weeks, so a few months, do they have to go through a security check-in area, or do they get a badge to be able to go with their employee?
We will issue them a badge, and we do most, most of the students now, and Wolford, I think, has their own badges, but we will begin issuing badges to all of the students for that period of time while they're here. They'll have, they'll have photo-ID badges, the same as you do.
Would they be dedicated employee entrances, or you would have to go through the regular categories?
You're gonna have access to any of the outside doors, I mean, any designated employee entrances now. I don't know if we've really used them in years as such. Downtown, for instance, is designated employee entrance, is outside human resources, but I know employees come in and out through the doors by EBS. You have access to any of those doors, but I would not recommend that you come through loading dock areas, those can be pretty congested and not really safe. So we don't want employees, although some employees will have access to those doors, because they're in and out on the dock, but all employees will not have access to those doors. But you can use any of the doors here that you use, including cafeteria doors. They're all access controlled, the outside doors here, so you may have gotten used to those being unlocked during the day, and as you're, once you go in and out. They're gonna be locked all the time now, but you'll have card access to those doors as well. Anything else? Yes, sir?
Is there any change with security in our parking garages?
Changes with security in the parking garages, such as?
Parking in general, because with, I'm not sure what's going on downtown with parking there, but coming in later in the day, there's absolutely nowhere to park, and I've received citations on my card for parking in the wrong area.
Downtown?
There's nowhere, there's really nowhere.
Downtown's been kind of a congested issue this entire season, actually. We had some repair work that had to be done on the seventh floor, so we had to close at the seventh floor now. It was worked, it could not be done during the rainy season, so we had to do it during the busiest time of year. So you know we've had a barricade between the third and the fourth floor, so employees, folks that are coming into the wellness center and the Med Plaza cannot get up into employee parking, well, we've removed that during the season, and we've allowed employees to park on the third floor, because we lost the seventh floor. We're about three weeks out, I think, from having the work completed on the seventh floor. We'll put that barricade back in. There will be some additional changes to parking coming up, which I can't really tell you about yet, but I'm hoping that we're gonna have plenty of parking for downtown employees in the future. I know we do right now. You come in at two o'clock in the afternoon?
No, sometimes they come in at eleven in the morning, between nine and eleven, sometimes it's at seven.
And it's full on?
Yeah.
On four to seven?
If I come in later than seven-thirty, you're eight o'clock, completely full.
Well, feel free now, if you need to park, you know, anywhere on three, on the ramp between two and three, you can park in those areas as well. Within the next two, three weeks, we should have the seventh floor open, so that should eliminate the congestion.
And you will shortly be seeing some changes to the parking policy, re-designating certain areas for parking for employees, for visitors, and stuff like that, so we're fine-tuning that. We were going, getting it ready right at the end of season, season's kind of eased up, you know, a little bit right now, so probably in the next two weeks, you'll see something. So just stay tuned. We understand parking is a problem.
We need to, we're getting notes from downtown. We need to make sure when we have the dialogue going, that we're telling, we're telling the audio what the dialogue is, because they're not hearing, they're not hearing the audience.
I see that, ma'am.
I have a question about parking out in the parking garage.
Yes.
Here. I've seen people come, I think visitors park out there, and sometimes there's no place for the staff, like he said, if you come in a little later.
That has, sure.
And I know they're visitors because of the way they dress.
Yeah, and what we're, yeah, and we don't have signs up right now, we're working on going and figuring out where we need to get the signs. We don't want to, people are already distressed enough as they are coming in, we don't want to go and say, no, you can't park there, that's employees only. We're working through that issue right now, trying to get things realigned on.
Because I've found that door sometimes isn't shut, so they're just walking right into the hospital.
Yeah, when you find that, let us know, there's an airflow issue sometimes through that door, and it won't let the magis secure.
All right, we need to, we need to keep it in a question and answer. Remember, we're in a studio right now, we've got about a hundred-and-twenty-five people downtown, about seventy-five at Central, and probably about a hundred-and-twenty-five or so out in the web answer too. So any other questions here? Downtown, if we want to go to any questions that you have on the benefits, changes, or security, and then we'll open it up to the broader questions. Gary?
Anybody have any questions? Sorry?
How is the Telford Center gonna be locked down?
John, how's Telford Center?
Telford Center?
Question is, how is the Telford Center gonna be locked down? You'll be coming up here, drop that.
The Telford building will be open. We have outside groups that come in and use our auditorium, and they use the meeting rooms. There's two sets of doors on the connector on the second floor between the Telford building and the hospital. Those will be locked, and they're card access, so they will not be able to come into the hospital if they get into the Telford building.
So short answer is, at this time, the Telford will remain open as it is, but the access into the hospital from Telford is where it's gonna be controlled. We may go and modify that in the future. Any other questions downtown? On the?
Yes. You might have mentioned it, but we've lost audio for salaried employees with the change in PTO. Does that number holidays, or excludes holidays?
Yeah.
PTO change for salaries, that the question?
Yeah, the PTO change for salary, the numbers that were on the screen exclude the salaries, the salaries, the, I'm sorry, the holidays. The holidays are not built in to that graph.
Other questions downtown?
I have a question, I have a question about the PTO accrual. It's, you said days, how many hours is a day? And for the accrual, you said also if you pick up extra shifts, you could earn more PTO, but right now it seems like a flat rate, is that changing?
The flat rate for the PTO, while we'll have a standard flat rate for those who do not pick up additional days, you have the opportunity, by removing the cap of the forty-hour accrual, to earn more PTO hours. So for instance, if you worked an extra eight hours shift, then it might be an extra hour that you get towards PTO. And we could work through any of the calculations for you, you know, we, we'll update the PTO grid, so that you'll see what the accrual is for an eighty-hour basis, then you can do a calculation with that. It's gonna vary for the different age, or different tenure groups.
And we'll be circulating details on all these changes out on leadership listens and on the Facebook page. Other questions from downtown, relative to security or benefits?
With benefits, with the tuition assistance changes, does that apply to seasonal rates?
It would apply, just as it applies to today, so whatever your seasonal agreement is, if it's, you have to be here for a year, then that would, that would decrease to the, to the ninety days. So we can go back and add further clarification on that one, once we look at the seasonal agreement. Seasonal employees don't work on a year-round basis, so it may be that the commitment's a little different, but we will, we'll give you clarity on that.
Hey, I have a question about PTO for people that are here over twenty years, there doesn't seem to be any more accrual after that. Are they looking into that?
That is correct. The PTO will cap at fifteen years plus.
All right, how about Central? Any questions at Central? Can you bring Central up?
Thank you. Are you doing for security down at Central?
Security at Central, we're going and looking at putting a security officer, and we're working out those plans right now, so stay tuned.
My job requires you can go to the hospital area for meetings, et cetera. Am I going to need to, will my badge work on the exterior doors, or will I need to check into the specialty?
Yes, the question was, if somebody's coming from Central downtown, or to North for a meeting, is their badge gonna work on the exterior doors? Yes, it will.
Thank you.
And other stuff from Central?
What about outside agencies that come in and work from, that normally don't have a badge or anything? Will they be allowed to go to the security for the day?
Yeah, the question, the question is accessing by outside agencies who come in for a meeting, they don't have a badge, they will have to go through, through the security check-in point. Yes.
And will we have one here at Central?
Other questions from Central?
Thank you. I need more room here, Kevin.
Okay, all right, was any web questions that were?
Just a question about security at urgent care locations, is there any change there?
No change on security at urgent care at this time. All right, we want to open it up now to some broader questions, and I'm gonna kind of start the ball rolling with Mr. Dutcher. Can you explain what is going on in Bonita, Estero, or et cetera?
So you've probably heard that NCH has begun the construction and development of a freestanding emergency facility in Bonita Springs. It was a long, protracted process in the village of Estero that didn't work out so well for us, so halfway through that process, we decided to shift gears and look at opportunities in Bonita Springs to develop the same facility. And this facility, about two weeks ago, we received approval from the city of Bonita Springs to develop forty-one thousand two-story facility. This is on property that is on the west side of US forty-one, just south of Coconut Road. So if you know of Angelina's Restaurant on the right-hand side of the road, east side of the road, right across the street from it. It's right north of where that old ship building used to be, and it's now a senior citizens apartment complex. We are adjacent to that property. As you can see, there's quite a bit of fill that's required for this project, and so if you go by it, what you'll see is all the trees are gone. It was a very tree-intensive piece of property, and we're putting in six feet of fill to raise the property up a little bit. We're required to do that for drainage and other requirements. The project will include a freestanding emergency room, a full-service imaging radiology department, physician office space for both primary and specialty physicians on the second floor, as well as a small surgery center that'll do either small ambulatory surgery or endoscopy procedures. So that's the plan. Our estimated opening is early December for the first floor. Emergency room in the imaging center will be open early in December. The second floor, the physician office space and ambulatory surgery center will open up in January or February of nineteen.
Let's open it up to general questions up here at North, and we'll start the ball. I think we were dumping the slides anyways. So any general questions up north, let's go.
My question is for security, you were saying every employee will have access to all the doors. We're sort of, we're at the North Campus, but not necessarily, our department is Bear's Den, we're not in the hospital. Would all employees have access to our facilities as well?
No, no. Wait, 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 John, we gotta go to... Question was, at Bear's Den, making sure that there is no access for all the employees into the Bear's Den, and the answer is, it's the same restriction in place now, at Bear's Den will be in place afterwards. Good question.
Thank you.
Other question up here? Saw another hand up over there. That's where John came? Questions, Gary from downtown?
Questions? I ask. Raise your hand, we'll get your mic.
Raise your hand, we'll get your mic.
My question is if you're an employee that goes between both campuses, would you have access to both of the campuses?
Yes, the question is if you're an employee that goes between both campuses, will you have access to both campuses? And the answer is yes.
Anything else, anybody? Looks like we're good here. Thank you.
Okay, Central, any questions in general?
I think we're good here, Governor.
Okay, all right. Any, Scott, do you have any question coming in? Yeah, do you want to go and?
Those are the ones.
Well, we sort, Renee and I will sort through these. Zach, do you want to give folks an update on Southeast and what's happening out there?
Hello, I'm Zach Postock. I'm the chief administrative officer. If anybody's been out 951 going south in the past eight months or so, you've seen some construction going on. Is that for me? So just north of the interchange there where 41 and 951 meet, about a mile and a half, two miles north of that, we've got a new facility that we've been constructing. We've always had a presence on 951 across from the Collier Hospital called the Edison. We've had physician office space, we've had some, some minor imaging equipment, CT and x-ray, we've had physical therapy out there. We're relocating all that to this new building, which we're calling Southeast. It sits between Five Guys and the Skillets, so we think that's pretty good for us to provide healthcare. So that'll open roughly the first week of June and we will add to that a larger therapy space, all imaging, including MRI, bigger physician office space, and sleep lab. And on the first floor, we will also have urgent care. So that's exciting news for that area. Any questions about that?
A question about that specific location, but if there's forecasting or not, is it going to be more of a priority and likely expanding that into the hospital? I understand you've got more, oh, you're spaced out.
They're going to build a hospital out there.
NCH Northeast, are we going to build a hospital out there? That's the question. That's not, that's not in the cards just right now. We are always reviewing the area and seeing how growth trends will determine what, what needs to have worked. We're actually going to be having a strategic planning meeting with our board in the month of May, so that may be something that we discuss, but it's not in the cards today. Any other questions about Southeast or anything else I can answer?
Here's Zach, here's one that just came in. The new imaging center at Southeast, is it going to be part of NCH Imaging or is it going to be hospital-based?
Good question. So it is a part of NCH Imaging, so it is not hospital-based. So it'd be no different than the other imaging centers that we have that have been under the NCH Physician Group. What, what kind of growth are you having in NCH Physician Group? Any new positions, any new services? Good question. So last year and the two years prior to that, we've had excessive growth, which has been very exciting. We've added new locations. Last year was a 40-physician year that we brought on. We've added new specialties like urology to the group, but one of the things that we've realized over the past several months, we've had a difficult time staffing that growth. So we've been backing down on the growth and shoring up operations. If you've tried to call one of our offices over the past six months, you may notice it's difficult to get through. So we are adding staff, we're taking down the phone trees so that when you call the office, you're going to talk to a live person. So we're going to standardize the offices, we're going to shore up staffing, and we're going to provide better service to the patients, and then we'll get back to growth again. Any comments about Dr. Patterson or Dr. Colton? So Dr. Patterson is our fellowship-trained breast surgeon. She's located here on the North Campus. Her practice has grown quickly and she is, she's amazing. If you ever talked to her, you know anything about her work, her outcomes have been great. So that is an area of growth for us as we start to explore cancer and do more there. And then likewise, Dr. Colton is our urologist that started with us in January. If you don't know, there's been a lot of things that have happened in the community with 21st century oncology and some of the struggles that they've had as a result, a lot of urologists left town. So our commitment to the community was to shore that up. So we've got Dr. Colton, who's been with us since January. We've got Dr. Zagrov that will start with us next month. And then I'm happy to say that as of earlier this morning, we have another physician assigned with us, will be here in October, and that's Dr. Johannes. So we'll have three urologists pretty quickly. So the growth, some of the growth continues in those areas where we have urgent needs, but for the rest of the group, we're trying to stabilize things right now.
Zach, one last question just came in here from the web is can you go and specify what imaging services South will have?
Southeast?
Yes, Southeast.
So that Southeast will have x-ray, CT, MAMO, MRI, and ultrasound. And a new sleep lab. Good, thank you.
John, we've got a couple of questions that have come in. Can you give folks an update on what's going to be happening for Nurses Week, which we've combined now with Hospital Week? And then also there's some questions about the differential in charge pay between the ED and the units, if you mind if I try to add a little bit?
Sure. So who was at the hospital or Nurses Week celebration last year? So this year, we're doing, going to get on the golf, on the golf course side, so please come. We are including all the activities for Nurses Week with Hospital Week, so it's going to be, the schedule is on the, on the intranet. Happy to share with anybody. Yeah, the one was differential?
Yeah, differential charge, charge pay.
So, yeah. So we have a differential, a different system or a different charge pay code. So we have a new job description for the ED charge nurses, our emergency department charge nurses. We've had some questions about why do the ED charge nurses get a different rate of pay versus the charge nurses on the floors? It's, it's not fair, basically. So it is a different job description. Their jobs, duties are different than what we do on the floor, but we are committed to looking at other areas that have job descriptions that you think are unique to your specialty areas. So if you have a desire for us to look at that together, please let us know and we'll sit down with you and your, and your leader and your, and your unit department champions are from your units and we'll go over that together. So today's different because the job is different, but we're committed to looking at that if there is a, a need, as I said.
Renee's received several questions on follow-up on the PTO.
Okay, so I've got a couple of questions on EIB and it says, how do we utilize the existing EIB if we need to use it? It's the exact same way as you utilize it today, so it needs to be for qualified femla event and paperwork. So you first would use your PTO time and then into your EIB time. Another question was can we use our existing EIB at our discretion like vacation time? And no, the same, the same parameters still go into place for sick time. Another question was why do employees with less than five years earn more PTO yet the long-time employees are capped? The newer employees coming on actually earn a lesser amount than our tenured employees. So it's a milestone and a recognition as you move through that grid. So it's not that they're moving more. If you could, if you remember those graphs I showed you, there was a huge delta between the, the two. So it's just right sizing them and getting them equal to our, our long-time employees. And then another question was on my reference to eight-hour shifts versus a 12-hour shift. So for 12-hour shifts, do you actually earn less? That part of the PTO policy has not changed. The path accrual is if you are working full-time 40 hours. So that is no different today than it has been in the past, so it's all dependent on what you work. One quick question that just came in was in time of emergency, can we go negative into PTO like with IRMA? That will be treated on a case-by-case basis. You do have as part of our Blue Zone Initiative from January to March that you're allowed to go 40 hours negative into the bank, but as far as just an open door of negative policy, we do not have that in place. So if we had something like IRMA again, we would evaluate it at that time. Thank you. Okay.
This is actually working. We've got questions that are just rolling in here from out on the web and downtown. One thing that's coming in, folks are asking what's up with the elevators in the parking garage? It's become the new hydration station for the downtown elevators. They're just the best. We're looking at it, we're working on it. Replacing and fixing elevators is not cheap, but it is something, it is very much on our radar right now. We're getting probably three or four leadership listens a day on those, lots of questions just now. Gary, I think you have a question downtown? Hey Gary, hey Gary, are you there?
This question's for HR. I, I wanted to know that as the, not being capped at 40 hours, will that just be when you're on break or overtime or on a callback basis? Will that affect it?
It would, it's any hours that you work that you're getting paid for, so your on-call hours, it's going to be regular hours worked or your overtime hours. Okay, so your regular hours that you're paid for. We also had another quick question that came in as it relates to EIB and DOT. We didn't talk much about the DOT. DOT is for department managers and above. Remember, they're different than staff. They're, they have a use or lose. There is no carryover, it's a different program. So we're going to talk to you about that at department head today.
That's all here, thank you.
Okay. Rick, anything else from Central?
Well, hang on. We do have one, go ahead.
When is that the Southeast?
Some of these, when is that going to open, in May, I believe?
Yeah, first week in June. So the question is when is Southeast going to open? It looks like the first week of June. Yep, so.
Got one more question here.
About the security in the parking lot at Central.
Did you hear that?
Yes, they're asking about the security, what about security at the parking lot at Central? Let's go offline and have a conversation about that one. We'll get a focus group from Central together with John Griffith to figure out the best way to approach doing security up there. All right. We realize this is a totally new format, quick show of hands, people like this, not like it. Any thoughts? Looks like we had about 125 or whatever up here and we had I think about 125 downtown, 75 at Central. How many do we have on the web?
We'll have to go back and look, I think over 200.
Okay, yeah. Yep, so we'll have to, straight talk, we'll capture this as well as the video will be posted. So thank you all very much for your time.